Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:38 on Tuesday, August 16th, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First up is our consent agenda. First, we're going to vote on the minutes from July 19th. Has everyone had a chance to read them and review them?
Yes, and I will make the motion to approve the minutes from July 19th.
Second?
I'll second.
Is everyone, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain, just because I wasn't here.
Okay. Perfect. Next to vote on warrants 0082, 0083, 0003, 0006, 0008, and 0009, which we are signing hard copies of now. Any questions or comments on those?
I'm still looking them over because they weren't in the folder.
Okay.
I'm the last one on the list.
Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve warrant number 0082, 0083, 0003, 0006, 0008, and 0009.
Excuse me.
Bless you.
Can I have a second?
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do you want to finish looking at them?
This is just salary.
Okay.
There's two more. Do you want to, we can recircle this if you want to look at them, Audrey, before we...
I mean, I can abstain from the vote, too.
Okay. It's up to you.
I'll just abstain and keep looking. Okay. Did I sign that one?
Yeah.
And Ally's not here today, right?
Alright. Donation checks.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hi. Happy school year.
Yay.
I'm here to present two different checks that we have received. An anonymous donation from a representative of the town through a grant called Wishful Thinking Fund. The grant is from Vanguard Charitable out of Warwick, Rhode Island. We have received two checks. The first check is in the amount of $6,940, which will fulfill the baseball fence project. It will satisfy all the remaining balances that we have with that project, and installation for the varsity softball irrigation system. So that's one check. The second check is in the amount of $5,000, and this is for any student, individual students in the increments of $25 to $500 as recommended by teachers, counselors, administrators, approved by the discretion of the principal to award and assist and recognize students that are facing hard times, that may need support, purchasing meals, sneakers, registration fees, and seek other opportunities. The donor would like to remain anonymous. I have the checks in hand. I've scanned a copy of the letters that accompany the checks, so I am seeking permission to accept both checks.
Mr. President, I think you mentioned finish the baseball fence, but is it baseball or softball?
Baseball.
Okay. And then it's the softball?
Irrigation.
Can I have a motion to accept the two anonymous donations? One for $6,000 and change?
$6,940 for the first one, and the second one is for $5,000 to be used for the school year.
So moved. And do we have a minute to, whoever that anonymous person is? Like, I wish we could thank them properly. That's wonderful.
Yes.
Can we send a note and give it to you to pass along?
Of course.
Alright. We'll draft a letter and send it out just to thank them properly, but I was going to do that after we accepted the, formally accepted the donations. Just, it's incredible, and we really appreciate it.
Awesome.
Yes, it certainly doesn't end here. There'll be more funds coming in. There are some other projects that we are working on right now. And just so you know, the $5,000 that was for the students, they expect to fund this until the amount runs out. So they anticipated funding up to $50,000.
Is it the same anonymous donor?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There's an 05, and it says 06. So anyway, I will take a motion to accept the donations.
I'll make a motion to accept the donations of both checks. One in the amount of $6,940 and one in the amount of $5,000.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And again, thank you to the donor. That's just really...
So generous.
Really wonderful. Next is a donation from Connecticut Business Systems. That's you.
That's me. So, once again, Connecticut Business Systems. Our vendor for our Xerox copiers made another donation. This time it was some color printer slash copiers, Xerox. They donated two devices that are being deployed in high school. One is replacing a color printer which is used in one of our computer classes. And interestingly, when I took the old one offline, I realized it's almost 20 years old. It's not going to often get that much life out of a printer. So that was a welcome donation, and so we have two of them. They have been donating to school a couple times a year, and they probably will be having some more donations that I'll be recording out over the next, you know, few months or so. So just, so you know, in the high school right now, almost all of the printers are, have been donated, and have been donated from Connecticut Business Systems. I'm not talking about the copiers, about the printers that are in computer labs, classrooms. Often, it's probably 90%, more than 90% of them were donated. So they're very helpful to us, and I'm, you know, once again, I'm glad to present that to you, and there's more.
Alright. Again, thank you for another generous donation. I'll accept, I'll take a motion for accepting the printers?
Yep. I'll make a motion to accept the donation from the Connecticut Business Systems.
I'll take a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved unanimously. Okay.
Janice, can I jump in for a minute?
Of course.
I have an extra warrant that was not on our list. 005, 0005, 0005?
Okay, I missed that one.
It wasn't listed.
One, two, three, four, five, six. So is there, is there seven warrants? I thought I only signed, did I sign them off? I thought I only signed six.
Do you want to pass that back?
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to finish signing.
I signed it. I just was counting wrong. Okay, so we need to amend our vote for warrants, and, well, I guess we can just make a second motion to approve warrant 0005. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve warrant number 0005.
Thanks for catching that, Audrey. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Alright, that one, I... Did everybody sign five, then? It looks like it.
No.
No?
I did not.
Okay.
I still have the rest here.
Okay. Next up is JV volleyball.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello. So we are here to seek approval to add the girls' JV volleyball team. In the fall, we had 34 girls sign up showing interest. Right now, we have 28 signed up, so there's only six that play at a time, and fielding a team of 12 to 15 is a pretty good number. So we would like to give that opportunity to some of the younger kids to play at the junior varsity level.
Excellent. And we're, you're only asking for girls, but there's boys volleyball in the spring?
In the springtime, yeah.
So we will, you're not asking for that now, or we'll go and see?
Not now, because we don't know the numbers or the interest level just yet.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve, oh, well, does anyone have a question? Sorry. I'm just moving things along tonight, I'm sorry.
So junior varsity, would include what grades?
Seven through 12.
Seven through 12?
Well, yeah.
Seven through 11, right? 12?
Well, I guess if it's a senior's first year playing in the program, they could technically play junior varsity, but it doesn't happen very often.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before I step all over anyone's toes again? Alright, can I have a motion to approve JV volleyball?
I'll make a motion to approve junior varsity volleyball.
Okay, I have a second.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Exciting. Do you want to do the handbooks now?
Yeah, I'd say the employee, for each new student who's in the faculty.
So I'm going to request that we make an adjustment to the agenda and vote on the employee handbook and the high school handbook while Ally is here to present to us, rather than, since we're going to be breaking to work groups. Is that alright with everyone?
That's fine.
Okay, great. Alright. Do you want to do employee handbook first, or do you want to do the high school one first?
I can do the high school one.
Okay, great.
So here we are. There's not a whole heck of a lot of changes this year. I do want to recognize Todd Dorman for his work in updating the student handbook. He provided a summary of changes that you should have access to. We updated, I'm not going to read off on all of them, but if you could refer to them, those, they're minor changes. Some of the changes were required by law to update certain sections, so you'll see that. We clarified some of the attendance language by removing remote language from our student handbook because that had lived in there. Clarified some excuse absences and added additional language. We're still seeing that we need to further clarify with parents in regards to what excuse absences and what the school's, you know, understanding is versus the state's understanding of absences. Dress code is always one for updating, and lockers, the cost of a lock, because of, costs of everything is going up, so we increased it ourselves because we would have been losing money on this. So we increased it to $7. But the list is there for you to see. There was a small update to the disciplinary table, which is the chart in there around language of harassment, and that doesn't meet the bullying threshold. So there's some language around that that you'll see in there. But we're seeking for you to review and for, to vote to approve of our student handbook for the '22, '23 school year.
Any questions? Just a, in my head, thought, you mentioned a few of them are like required changes. Is there, as I look at it, like, I don't know which ones were required versus like choice? Is there a way of denoting which ones were required, or?
It's a lot at the back.
Yeah.
If you find like the appendixes, it's all labeled. You'll see it outlined by MGL.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Is everyone comfortable with making a vote now?
Hang on one second.
Can I just ask when this was shared?
It's, um...
Or where this was shared?
It's in the folder.
Was it last?
Um...
Maybe?
No.
I believe he shared it, I want to say last week? Last week? It should be in the folder, and do you have this form?
It's a link. It's a link within the form, at the bottom of the form.
It's not, no, not that one. It's a different one than, not today's. It's in today's meeting folder, August 16th.
I can certainly share it with you, Jill. Would you like me to do that?
That's funny. Jill doesn't have half as many things in her view of the folder as I do. She has...
I promise.
Seven things, and I have like 14.
I just reshared the presentation overview with you on this one.
I have 11, and she has seven.
I'm not trying to be difficult or, because I saw the, I saw the employee handbook. I did not see any student handbooks.
I sent the high school one right to your email.
Thank you.
I just reshared it with everyone.
That's weird, though, because if you're on the folder...
I wonder if it's because you had that weird "to" email thing at one point?
Right, and it was, my name was spelled wrong, so I don't know if it's picking up the misspelling and not always catching. Thank you.
We should try, we've got to see what we can do about getting that incorrect email. Like 100% removed, yeah.
We'll check the SC slash agendas group to see what it looks like in there.
Because she's getting some of it.
Yeah, because when we send things, we usually share it with Jackie.
But if, but if it's in the folder, and she has access to the folder, that's the part that's weird. It's not Vanguard's. That was weird, you did that one.
I'm just clicking on everything just to make sure. You've got all 11. So this is all the stuff that we'll be referring to tonight.
P E L L E T I E R?
Yeah. It's an E or an I?
P E L L E T I E R.
Yeah, it's very similar. It's pretty helpful to tell you when it was shared.
Yeah, I see it now. I don't know.
Okay. There you go.
Did you refresh and it comes?
Yeah.
It'll take some, I'm going to use stuff. That's weird, though.
I wonder if it's some of the updates that David had mentioned in the email?
I did them this morning, and then I looked at everything like 1, 2 o'clock this afternoon, and went through everything in the folder. Yeah, I don't know.
So did you have the volleyball one, or any of the other?
Yep. I had...
Which ones are you missing?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I had the calendar, I had the girls volleyball, I had a copy of the employee handbook, the food service, the school lunch.
There should be a PS, FS, and C approval.
Yep, I had that.
Agenda, minutes.
Yep, the agenda, the minutes, and the presentation. I think it was that first one?
We'll have a copy.
Yeah. I don't know. I think I'm good now.
Okay. Um, I forgot what I was saying. Are we comfortable voting on the changes for the student handbook?
I do have a question. Sorry. I'm just getting to where it is, because I noticed that there was a change in the dress code piece of head pieces, right? But when we were going, I'm trying to remember what... Words are eluding me. Policy, excuse me, the word policy. Is the policy aligned with the policy that we are working on that has dress code? I guess, like, that's where my question is. Because I know when we had previously looked at East Meadow's handbook, the dress code policy was different than the dress code policy, was it the districts? I'm trying to think of what policy number it was.
The policy, the district policy is different than the handbook.
There it is. Thank you.
So what it states in the handbook is different than what's in the policy?
So do we know what fills the line now? I don't know if the high schools always did or didn't, but that's the only thing that's kind of in my mind right now, is obviously they should all be the same, rather than it different in two different places. So I'm trying to think.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for all that on that. I don't, I could certainly look at it. If you give me the policy number, I can certainly pull that up and...
I couldn't even find the word "policy" in my mind.
Well, I need the number now.
Hang on.
It's an MJ?
I think it's J. Yeah, it's J I C A. That's on page 22.
Steven, do you have a page number?
22.
Thank you.
Page three, sorry.
Is that in the policy or in the handbook?
The policy.
I'm trying to find if it's in. I saw it before, I know I can't. I don't know, I just, that's kind of a sticking point for me. I feel like if we have it as a school policy, then the handbook should follow the policy, and we're following MASC.
Yeah.
So I see some similar language in regards to that it's not disruptive. You know, so if a student's wearing attire that is disruptive to the school day, I can see that. We certainly don't prevent kids from attending school.
I just don't know if, like, in this area, should it, and this may be a discussion for the committee, but should it be the same language just transferred to here? Do we need the extra explanations? I don't know.
I feel like it fits here because administration reserves the right to act upon, you know, so things that we're looking for. You know, shirts that have obscene language, like, there's an example of something that we would, you know, approach the student, talk with the student about making right choices, about wearing clothing, ask the student to flip it inside out, things like that. But there's certainly other things that we use discretion, and we don't go there. You know, it can be very controversial.
What Audrey's saying is if we have it in the policy as this way, similar to what we would do in the employee handbook, do we use the same policy from the policy manuals in the student handbook? I think that's the question that you're asking.
Is there an easy way to see where the policy is, so we, I could have them up on both screens? Search up policy J when you go into your drive.
Okay, thank you.
And that's on page 23.
And you said page 23? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to have it on both screens and kind of see it. Is policy meeting tonight later? I'm wondering if we table this, and you guys, can you, do you have another agenda for your...
We just approved this policy this spring, right?
Well, with this, with the handbook, I'm wondering if you guys want to take a look at it, and we table the vote until after, when we reconvene?
Yeah, I mean, I think, to kind of go over what Audrey's saying, too, like, this could be related, obviously it relates to this right now, but it could relate to other areas as well in the future. So when that happens, or if it happens, like, what are, what is expected and what are the steps? Because if there is a policy that already exists, is the handbook stating the exact language? Is it just in reference to the poli, like, what are the expectations around that?
Yeah, I think that's a conversation that has to be added in the committee, but I think for now, making sure it's aligned with the school committee approved policy would be the prudent decision.
I feel like, at first glance, for me, I'm reading it that the policy, what we approved, J I C A, is very high level. And then in our handbook, it's clearly a lot more delineated, but I feel like it's outlining what we approved in the policy. So I'm not seeing, I see that the words are different, but I feel like the meaning is so, I don't... Does that make sense? Like, I feel like what we have as the policy is the high level, and the handbook is delineating what is and is not acceptable, because we don't have anywhere in here any of the, like, you know, how long shorts have to be, or no tank tops, or no crop tops, or no, you know, no hats except for high school students, or at the discretion of the teacher. So none of that is delineated, but I feel like we're saying in our handbook, we're outlining what we've taken the dress code, what the approved policy is. And I feel like there's been some other things where we have the policy, which is supposed to be the high level thing, umbrella. And then in our handbooks and different things, it's like very specific, so that it's outlining. Do I have that backwards?
No, I don't think so, but this...
I'm not seeing where it's a mass, am I in the wrong section?
I know, but I feel still like the language is...
Which, which part of the language is your sticking point? And from which one?
Well, I guess my question was as specific as Steven said. Should they be the same versus one being more detailed versus the other?
But I feel like we have a lot of instances where the policy is...
For example, so if you go further down on the one that we have brought today, the student handbook for the high school. Shirts and blouses must completely cover abdomen and back. Skirt dresses and shorts must reach mid thigh. Like, there are pieces like that. Beachwear, so no spaghetti straps, crop tops, tank tops that expose the torso.
Right.
Like, we are kind of, and then like even up above, and again, not that I'm sticky wicket.
So I don't understand what... It's like the high level stuff. It's not procedural, it's policy. So you're saying the handbook shouldn't have the details, then?
I'm wondering if it's a conversation, and that's, you know, I think that's where maybe Steven was getting, and I'm wondering about a conversation, because when you get so specific, the intention is good, and the intention is to provide, you know, an educational environment that's optimal for learning and focusing and doing all those things. But at the same time, when a policy exists that is there just to ensure that you are doing top level, just to kind of make that level playing field for everybody, you want to be careful that you're not kind of micromanaging everything to the extent where you're opening yourself up for people to create a problem or to create a fight that you don't intend to make. And so I, I see kind of both sides, but that's where it's like, if there's this policy that exists, and then the handbook is so specific, how do the two match, and how do the two merge?
I see.
Without creating a problem? Should anyone have one? And how do we not kind of open ourselves up to that?
Yeah, I think, looking at it, like, an example that I could think of is a shirt that has an opening on the back, but like, it's connected through, I don't know, something fancy, right? But like, could a teacher potentially, or an administrator, say, "Well, the policy says your back must be completely covered based on the handbook, but in the policy manual, it's saying, is it disruptive?"
I see.
So then I think that starts where like...
Right, because I'm, I see what you're saying. Because like, you can take it, you know, skin tight outer material such as spandex, so that would pretty much...
Leggings.
Yoga pants, right?
Yoga pants or leggings, that would mean 7 through 12, 90% of the girls would go home on any given, any given day, so...
And that's where our discretion comes in. Again, it's not like we're, you know...
And that's where our discretion comes in. Again, it's not like we're, you know, looking, we just expect.
But that's also where, like, you can get the blurred lines of, are you fair? Is it equal? Are we making sure we're treating everyone the same?
I see what you're saying now.
You know what I mean? Like, it blurs the lines, although it's supposed to be making them clear. And I wish I had language like you did. Thank you for describing everything I was trying to say.
Well, it's, the intention is always, is always there
Correct, absolutely.
to just create the best environment possible. But in doing so, sometimes I feel like we get to a place where we sometimes just create opportunities where we're not always seeing like the, the big picture of where, you know.
But how do we then get to the point where it becomes, I mean, is everything then the discretion of the teacher? Because like for the hats, it's high school students only, so seventh and eighth graders aren't allowed to wear hats, but nine through 12 can.
I think we just need to start with the clarification around general policy. Like, if there's a policy that exists, does the handbook then differ in language from the actual policy? And if it, the answer is yes, then I think that there'll be more questions to kind of follow. In what ways, how much?
Okay.
You know, that kind of thing.
We could also consult our council about what's in the handbook as compared to what's in the policy and get feedback on that as well.
I mean, again, I know this document needs to be done sooner rather than later. School's right around the corner, but, you know, I hadn't even picked up on skin tighter outer material leggings.
Well, now, now you're.
Exactly.
I'm looking at it in a different, in a different way.
Right.
But at the same time, I feel like as administrators, they need to have some kind of the guidelines, and I feel like it needs to be out there for the students so you can point to, because the policy is too, I'll say vague, when you're, when you're having a discussion with a student. Like, I do feel like you need to kind of have more black and white, like. Yes, no, you know, so that there is recourse, because, I mean, I know that they're not going to send home every seventh through 12th grade girl that happens to wear leggings on, on a day. But if it's also, just like in a state park, you, you're, there's no alcohol allowed, but if you walk from campfire to campfire, every dad and mom sitting, sitting back is drinking a beer at the campfire, it's there as a rule so that if there's something else, they have a reason to help regulate the situation. So I, you know, I, I kind of, again, see like both sides, but I do think that there needs to be discussion. So.
I'm happy to cross this with the, the student policies, Student J section with Todd in the next couple of weeks. If we could bring it back to you, are you meeting on the 30th? I know it's the day after school starts, but I think we're in an okay place where majority of things have been approved already, if this is that one section, but we'll cross it with Student J and see if we can bring it back to you for the 30th.
And I think just for me, the bigger picture too of this is this specific conversation is around Policy J, but if it also happens somewhere else, just like what is our language? Is it going to be referred to Policy whatever in the handbook, or kind of how are we going to do this down the road, just for continuity throughout handbooks in both buildings? Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, policy group is meeting tonight, so if you can maybe just kind of discuss, if you have time, I, I don't want to hijack your agenda for that. And then when we come back, we can have some additional discussion. And because it was on the agenda, if after you guys have your discussion and we come back and, and we're, you know, we can do that, we still have the ability to vote if we so choose after we have discussion. If not, we can table it and move it forward. Does that sound fair and right? Yeah?
That works for me.
So we will not vote on the student handbook right now, but we can look at the employee handbook now?
Yes, so the employee handbook has been reviewed by our council and made some additions to, or made edits based on her suggestions. And really, there were very few changes to this. We updated policies that have been updated in the past year, made sure links were live, things like that. Our council did send me an email that I just got today to look at our workman's comp procedures and suggested considering including that, which isn't part of this. So I was working on that today, actually, to get those procedures, and I can certainly add it prior to the next meeting, but that I think would be the only potential addition. Other than that, it was update, like I said, updating links and making sure it was well aligned, and Kimberly did review this.
Any questions on the employee handbook?
I guess just quickly, if you're adding workman's comp, are you also adding like an FMLA?
Um, I believe FMLA might be in here.
I, just a quick overview of the table of contents, I didn't see it. But that just reminds me, like, it's normally like they go hand in hand to a point in policy. Same thing with at will employees.
Yeah, and she just made that suggestion, so I was looking into, like I said, looking into that today.
Okay.
If you wanted to hold off, we could. If you wanted to vote it in as this, it was not like a have to, it was you may want to consider. And I don't think it would hurt to add it.
Right.
So if it's okay with you, I can, if you want to approve as is, or wait, or approve with the condition that I will add our workers' comp and FMLA information.
I'm good at this.
FMLA does go through the annual teacher training that they have to go through at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
It is in, FMLA is in that, but it might not be in here, so I can certainly add both of those.
Yeah, no, it doesn't matter either way. I just know, I actually just did an employee handbook myself, and it was very daunting once. And I was very well versed, and normally those go together.
So what are your thoughts? Do we want to vote as is? Do we want to wait until?
So just one last comment that.
What did we just say was being added?
Not FMLA.
Workman's comp.
Workers' comp.
Boy.
It's contagious, the words escaping.
I mean, it's such a simple word. I'm like, oh my goodness.
Just my only other comment, I do like in here, so like, it refers to different policies. This is even something that could benefit us in what we were just talking about. Like, if you look through here, like Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan, right underneath it, there's a hyperlink to Policy JICFB, and something like that could even be helpful in the student handbook. Just the simply having a spot to refer to.
Yeah, really, this is, there's actually one thing in here that was removed that didn't get to that. Um, yeah, this is really, right, like a blurb connected to the policy, the approved policy.
Right. So that's just another model, if we like this, like, to have that continuity across the board, that'd be another option for us to discuss how it looks. I'm definitely seeing that throughout this whole handbook.
Okay, so thoughts? Are we comfortable voting on this as is? Do we want to wait until workers' comp, that was the elusive word, is added, or revote with an appended, updated handbook? Discussion? Thoughts? Anyone? Bueller?
I'm fine with either option.
What do you think? What would, what would be your preferred?
I would like to have this out to employees next week, but I'm happy to share it with them with the caveat that we're adding workers' comp and vote on that on the 30th. So if you're okay with this, approving this, and I will add that section only, and then bring it back for final approval.
I'm comfortable with that. Is, is that comfortable, is everybody else comfortable with that?
Nope.
Okay, so I will take a motion to approve the employee handbook with the note that we will revisit when workers' comp has been added. I'll make that motion. Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and that's the only one that we're doing?
I think so, yeah.
What about East Meadow's student handbook?
That one we're tabling.
Oh, okay.
We're moving East Meadow to the 30th.
Yep. The plan is, they had some more updates that they needed to make, right? I think Ally and I have worked on the student handbook at the junior senior high school for the past four years, and I think there's some parts to change.
From what I recall, East Meadow is going to have the same thing with the dress code.
Yep. Yep. And I think that's a section that they were working on too. So I talked to Mr. Rosenberg, the assistant principal, today. He's going to be at that meeting, so that would be opportunity for us to introduce him, even though it'll be the second day of school. We'll introduce him here and then have their policy, or their student handbook, sorry.
Okay. Did we, did we actually vote? I don't know if we did.
We voted on the staff handbook. Did we?
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right then. The time is 7:19. We're getting ready to adjourn to our work groups. The three work groups that we have is Policy Subcommittee with Jill and Audrey, Goal and Evaluation with Jill and Audrey, and then Community Relations with Stephanie and George. I'm going to kind of float through a couple of them. It's 7:20. Do we want to reconvene at 8? Is 40 minutes enough time, or would you like it like 8:15? Because you girls have two.
We're also supposed to talk about goals, for school committee goals, potentially. So I feel like more time might be better.
Do you want to regroup at, we can touch base at 8 and see if we need additional time?
That works.
Okay. So we'll reconvene, well, I will check in with everybody at 8. If we need additional time, then we'll, we'll move from there. Okay? All right, so we will be back at 8 o'clock.
Well.
Do it. Okay, the time is 8:07, and we are reconvening after our work groups. First to report out is Policy. You want me to talk?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we did, there weren't any specific policies to go over, but we did have a continued conversation from earlier. And what we talked about first off was just reaching out for clarification from a council, just about the difference, or what would kind of be the best course of action going forward between the actual policy versus the handbooks, just so that we had a very clear picture about the Policy JICA, and then kind of in general, what the expectation would be. And then we did talk about, for the time being, at least being able to potentially move forward with voting on the student handbook with Policy JICA in place of what's there currently, since that's the actual policy that's in place, knowing that we can always adjust if needed depending on what Kimberly says.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
So, in every other area of the handbook, which I haven't been through well enough with a fine tooth comb, is it always 100% what the policy is, or is what's in the handbook in other areas more detailed than what the policy specifies? And you can say you don't know if you don't know. I don't know every area.
I think in terms of.
Because I know that we've been through.
Right. I think, I think when it comes, I think dress code is probably a really difficult topic to have this conversation on, because it's gray to begin with, and I think sometimes the more you try to make it black and white, the grayer you make it.
Right, which is what we were finding with the, like, with the spandex and the, you know, back and whatever.
You know, I think we always try to put information in the handbook that aligns with our policies, but sometimes, I will say, as an administrator, as a teacher, you kind of put things in the back of your head, and when they come up, the next time you review that policy, or the next time you review that section in the handbook, you're like, hey, remember we had this problem two or three times? If we clarify it more here, maybe that will prevent us. So in some ways, naturally, it starts to maybe become less aligned, even though that wasn't your intention. And I don't know that that's what happened with this, but, you know, I know from past experience that that could happen. And what I had said to Jill and Audrey is, I mean, we can run it by our attorney to compare what's in there, and if she feels it's well enough aligned, then the decision would come back to the committee to accept as is or suggest edits.
I have another just thought off of that, though. So if we are kind of, because again, I feel like we're just using this as an example. We did just approve the employee handbook, which also has areas that, you know, and like I said, hyperlinked and brought you to a policy, but that specific policy was not copy and pasted into the handbook. So are we being clear across the board on this? Do you know what I mean? So if we're in the employee handbook right now, you know, there's a section, most of them actually refer to a policy and have the hyperlink to the policy, but then also have like a little blurb under it. And we were okay with that. So I just want to make sure that we're being thoughtful in both, because it should be the same thing.
I'm going to open up the employee handbook. So what are, I'm.
So if you go into the employee handbook, there's many sections that reference, so say, I'm in like, the social media, you know, it references Policy IJNDBB, but it's not copy and pasted word for word. They have their own blurb in the employee handbook, and then it says like, I don't know, find where the other one, I can't.
Like, what page are you on?
But. I will say, when I was reading through the employee handbook, the wording is the same as the recommended policy, it just says Granby, as opposed to other schools.
I guess I just don't personally feel comfortable enough. I haven't fine tooth combed both of these side by side to make sure that they both align. And I just want to make sure if we're being diligent, you know, are we checking every single cross-referencing policy so that the continuity is there for both?
And I guess that would bring me to my next question, as we asked about whether or not handbooks were meant to be more specific.
Correct.
So, but one would assume, especially with a staff, that it would not bear to be more specific, because I feel like, again, that would bring about more issues.
And I will say, like, I did spend a lot of time on the employee handbook, and I can't say that I saw everyone side by side, but the differences were, Granby's obviously said Granby Public Schools, and the others said things like, let me see.
So if you, if you, page six of the employee handbook that says acceptable use policy technology, it links you to Policy IJNDB. They are definitely differently formatted. And that's my question.
Formatted or actual language?
Language, all of it. You have your purpose, and then there's number one, you know, that's similar, but then in two, general statement of policy, it's a very brief overview of a very large section in two. And they're not word for word the same.
I noticed on one of the other ones of policies, I should say, it said when we updated it, for example, this IJNDBB.
Mm-hmm.
Do we know when we last updated that one?
With Policy I, and I'm reading it the same.
Are you reading like where it's to you, like, okay, I don't, I guess we don't.
As Internet Acceptable User Policy, and then I'm reading it under General Concerns, under Section Two.
Mm-hmm.
The policy is adopted, the Granby Public School recognizes a proliferation, Granby Public School recognizes a proliferation.
Am I looking at something totally different?
Expectations of staff.
Yeah, what she's looking at is completely different.
Completely different. So what I clicked, maybe it's an old hyperlink, because actually, when I, it says 10-3-11.
I'm clicking on IJNDBB, under Social Networking Policy of the Granby Public Schools.
Yes, via the hyperlink that's there.
Via the hyperlink that's there, and the copy of the 2022-2023 handbook, and it all aligns perfectly.
So, I wish we could, it's, I'm looking at her screen, and it's completely different than...
Which one are you?
Completely different.
TBB.
And I'm just saying, like, I don't feel like I'm confident enough that I've gone through every single thing that says policy to cross-check that they're exactly the same, if that's what we're going for.
And then I will say that I don't think without more information.
And I don't know that that's what we're going for, maybe at some point it would be, but, like, if you look at the policy J, Student Discipline, there's a line in it that says, "Each principal shall include prohibited actions in the student handbook or other publication to be made available to students and parents." So like, within that policy, there's language in it that says, "In your handbook, you're going to get into more specifics." Like, within that policy specifically, and...
Right, so that's where, when I was on the policy committee, one of the reasons we started the policy committee is that our, the handbook is supposed to be more procedural, and our policy is supposed to be our policy. And what was happening is that our handbook was becoming, was contradicting our policies. So the policy is supposed to be overarching, like, these are the rules. Dress code, you must come dressed.
Umbrella versus raindrops.
And then the raindrop is, you must come dressed, but you can't come dressed, wearing no shoes, and, you know, whatever. So, I can see both sides of it, because, like, maybe the restriction is, when you start reading it with close things, is, you know, open back. Well, it might have an open back, but you might wear a tank top under, underneath that then covers your back, or, you know, the skin tight spandex, which is also known as leggings, or, you know...
The problem too, it becomes, especially with clothing?
Sleepwear. Well, flannel plants in the winter, right? Like, it's technically sleepwear, but most of the kids wear them, you know? And then we have pajama day, which is then, are we then signing up all of our kids to be dress coded, when we do pajama day, when it says specifically sleepwear? And, you know, so, I see both sides, but I think, I don't want to set us up where we start trying to cross-reference everything, because I feel like the umbrella should be the umbrella, and the raindrops, but I can see that maybe we've got raindrops and hail happening right now, with the way we're interpreting the dress code, which is fine. So, for what it's worth, this is what I'm going to suggest. I agree with the policy committee's thing to at least get the handbook in place, so that we have something for the students. We've made revisions mid-year, during the year, before, so I'm comfortable with that. And I think, for the few weeks, or two days, or whatever it might be, I'm comfortable with going with the policy as it stands. But what I, I personally would like to see some raindrops in the handbook, so that there's something to point back to. You know, I think for the administrators, and the teachers, and the students, and the parents, some of that outlining might be helpful. Maybe we don't need to get into as much detail, so we don't have situations like we had with an East Meadow situation a little bit ago, where dress code was incorrectly quoted.
Really?
In mass, right? But, we need to have something. So I agree with your recommendation, so, you know, that's my two cents. But I think we need to be careful that we don't start to get ourselves into trouble that we have policy in the policy book, and then our handbook is supposed to be procedures, and how we do things, and how we outline stuff, and we're taking that away, so that it's so vague, so that there's no recourse for people to point to. Because it, because it's distracting, or whatever the language might be, it doesn't really give administration or teachers real framework to, but maybe we need to look at the language that's, that's there, or have them look at it more, more closely. Does that make sense?
Yes, again, it's that dress code piece, like, if, if it's causing a distraction in the classroom, that's it right there, which is already in the policy itself.
But it might cause a distraction in one classroom, but not in another. Right, so...
Well, then it isn't even a distraction at all, or just someone's preference, which is why that language is a little concerning to me in general, so...
I get it, thank you so much.
Um, which is why it's something, if you just stick to the policy on something like that, you're kind of easing yourself out of situations.
Wait, say that again, I followed what you were saying, and then I got distracted by your cherry coconut.
So when you, when you get into situations where it could be a concern for someone versus not a concern for somebody else, and it turns into preference, or distraction, I'll use that word, even though I don't like it, for someone and not somebody else, then to me, that's where you get yourself into situations that are difficult to get through and back up.
Stand by.
Which is why, if you just stick to the straightforward policy, especially with something like dress code, then you stay out of that. I get that you don't have to do that in absolutely everything, and discipline's a great one, because you do need examples to, you know, kind of go through and understand and delineate, but I think that's where our conversation kind of led to with dress code, where there was not necessarily one. But the policy gives discretion, it says it right in there, you know, that's teachers, staff, administration has discretion. It's, I think the language is already stated in there in one of the last couple sentences of it. And, yeah, and so that's kind of where we just left it there.
Okay.
And I'm going to send it to Kimberly tomorrow morning, and I'll share her response back with everyone.
Because I do think, I don't want to set, then set a precedent that if we're doing that, that we have to redo every section in the handbook to make sure that it's...
I don't think every section needs it, however, I feel like dress code is an area that doesn't need it, personally.
So I, you know, I do, I get it, but, nevermind, it's, yeah, I'm just fine-toothing stuff. Alright, so, final discussion.
No, we had talked about moving forward the handbook.
Right, so that's where I'm at. Final discussion for the handbook, before we take a motion.
Oh, I do have one. Whether or not, if we did do that, and the handbook ends up needing to change, does then hard copy need to get printed out for everybody, or it's available online, right?
There's no, there's no hard copy that, unless it's asked.
Unless requested.
Okay.
So it would just be, I think it would just be an email, and they would probably have to have updated signatures or something on that section.
And we'd be able to go back, as long as families fill out the forms that will come out at the beginning of the year, to see which families requested the hard copy, so we could reissue one if there's changes made.
Right. I just want to make sure there's a way that it's released appropriately to them, so that they know that if we went from less specific to now, again, more specific, that...
And I think we could also, depending upon what Kimberly says, is that maybe we keep it as it's adopted, but we could give examples of what may cause, what may fall within that, you know? I think one of the things that would be difficult would be hats, you know?
Or even clothing with profanity, like, I get that.
Right, so that one, we could be, we could almost use it as a list of examples to be kept in, as things that might cause concern, you know? I think we'd probably remove the part that refers to leggings, but...
Or even ta, I don't know, there's like, that's where it becomes like, your values versus your values, versus yours, versus mine.
Right, but I'm, I'm thinking like, you know, if the hats, I know that they really, it's always been, you know, the seventh and eighth graders, no hats, and only when you're in high school, you know? That's been more of a practice than a policy.
Is that like a respect thing, that it's allowed in some grades and not in others?
I don't, I don't know why, but it's, but it's been, you know, that's sort of been the thing, so is it, do we then use that as an, as an example, like, you know? And part of it is that there's going to be, I guess they're all new kids, but we could, what I'm, what I'm trying to say, and not doing very well at all, is that if we don't want to have to reinvent the wheel with a new thing, you know, saying that Kimberly says we're fine, can we send home an addendum or an email, like, here are some examples of things that may be dress codable, to make it a verb? Like, when you're dress coded, also a verb. I've lost everybody.
No, no, I think, I think, I think the school would be fine with being able to, just like any other section, update it as needed, depending on what it is. And I think we would be more than capable to say, like, this is how we're going to, you know, make a motion to add this section in, or adjust this section in the handbook, and make it okay to then, you know, send that information onward. Just like if we, you know, policy got, you know, updated mid-year, or whatever it is, and gets updated or changed, and it is in the handbook too, or whatever it is.
Gotcha. So with that, before we go to the rest of what you had, do I have a motion to approve policy, the, no, I'm sorry, the student handbook?
The junior senior high school student handbook policy?
Yes.
Or handbook, it's not a policy?
For the dress code policy to be, to mimic policy, is it JICB or something?
JICA.
JICA. Do we have, do I have that motion?
I'll make the motion.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approve honestly, and then you'll still send this to Kimberly, and we just have to make sure that that's communicated to Allie and Todd.
Yep.
So that it's, you know, and she said, she said when she left here, that she would, you know, they would kind of go through it a little bit more closely. So I think all of those things happening, but we'll put it back on the agenda for the 30th, and if we need to make adjustments, we will.
Thank you.
Keep going, Jill.
Okay. So the other piece that we talked about were goals, school committee goals, and we talked about three different areas. The first one being onboarding process and procedure for new members, so we could identify all the materials, person, and all of the kind of procedures and the process for any new school committee members. You know, that way, you know, I know that Jackie had shared previous materials that were developed, and we can kind of make sure that those are still current, but even still, like, what are all the steps, expectations, who can you reach out to if there's questions?
Charting the course.
Yeah, the course that you take through mask, and like, when you're supposed to take that, you know, by, all those different things, and making sure that there, that was all figured out.
And in the, yeah, is there a folder right now even, in committee resources for it?
Not yet.
I don't think so.
So I think that was the, the idea, is that that could be one of our goals.
So I am, I, I know, there was a whole folder at some point, that I think might have a lot of that information, it's just a matter of finding it.
Well, Jackie did find a document that was very helpful, but short of where she shared it, I can't find where its home is, and I didn't want to be the one that moved it.
So, I don't know...
Like I usually do.
Again, it's a Google problem, not a maneuverability of computer problems, like, I do this...
I can happily move it, but I just didn't want to do it without...
But, what I want to, maybe you and I will just have to connect offline, is, I know that in stuff that was shared with me in the past, there was, because I was the new member that sort of demanded some of this, so I had a whole folder of stuff. So I just don't know, it would be when I started in 2018, and, and the stuff that was shared, maybe it's because it was just shared with me personally, and not actually added to a school committee folder. So Audrey, I will need to enlist you for help to sort of maneuver through this. If it was stuff like on Windows, I would be your girl, but this Google thing, I just like mentally shut down.
But that would be a great start, though, because then we could figure out what we have, what we might need.
Yeah, rather than trying to recreate the wheel.
I think it's titled School Committee Goals, too, like, if you typed in the search bar, I don't know if it might, like...
Well, I think there was new committee member stuff that we had, that, now if I do that in the search, search drive, will that do the drive that was specifically with me as well?
Yep.
Okay.
So that was one area. The second area that we talked about was just thinking about setting aside time for kind of continued growth and development of current, you know, ongoing members. And so, kind of talked about, when we had discussed the possibility of retreat, but even going back previously, when we had kind of like that training time with Tracy, when she came and, and talked about, I think she talked about the whole school committee member kind of process, too, and the roles and expectations and things like that. So, thinking about that as a goal, maybe setting some time aside, you know, three times a year, or something like that, where we spent a little bit more time, going a little bit more in-depth about any topics, or anything that we felt might be relevant for us. Whether it bring, having somebody come in and talk to us, or whether we just worked as a group, and, you know, with who we had in district, and just, you know, whether it's budget, or anything, anything else that we felt might be relevant.
Okay.
And I feel like it would also kind of give us an opened up opportunity, that if people couldn't come to certain ones, like, we could kind of fill in the gaps, too. I don't know if you want to bring up, Stephen, what you had mentioned also, about the retreat.
Yeah, so we do a leadership retreat with the district leadership team. We've done a two-day retreat the past two summers, so even setting aside either a full day or half day of one of those days, to have school committee invited as well, and then the whole leadership team, school committee included, is getting the same information, having the same type of dialogue. That could be a productive way to do it, rather than school committee meets here, DLT meets here, just maybe doing something together, so. And we typically try to plan those dates in March, April, so I think that would be, make things easier for this group, too, if, I think we just brought it up in June, and then try to scramble, and at that point, people's plans are...
But those are like during the day, day?
Those typically have been during the day.
Right. So for me, it's just, it sounds horribly selfish, but for me, it's a vacation thing, like, I would have to use a, a day of vacation to be able to, to do that. And I don't get a ton of it, so it's, it's harder for me to, to try to arrange, but, you know, I can, I can certainly work through that, but I'm not off in the summer, so, you know, it's...
Well, even if we decided to do it three times a year, and how we have our subcommittee groups on one meeting, and then the next meeting we don't, the next meeting we could try to have, like, where we break out and do some sort of, almost like a professional development piece, where we do meet with someone, and then it, so it's part of our meeting, too, rather than the summer ones. And I don't disagree with you, as far as the summer's tricky for everybody, but we do need to make sure we're getting together and doing the goals and that whole piece, too, at some point.
And the other thing that we had done in the past, and I, I hate to frame things like that, because just because we did it in the past, but it's my only frame of reference, so it is what it is, is, instead of doing a work group meeting, we spent an entire, like, an entire, like, part of the meeting, it was just a goals workshop. So we did our business at the beginning like we would before breaking out for work group, and then we just worked on goals for the remainder. So we had like two solid hours of, of goals and fleshing stuff out, and we did, you know, we did that when we were working on some of the strategic goal stuff, and then, so, you know, I think there's options, so.
And I, even with that part, too, it'd be, you know, we'd be open for that training, too, for pieces that maybe, you know, the superintendent thought that we could do some training on, too, that might be some areas of gaps that we've had questions on in the past. Maybe it's one about warrants, like, because I had asked questions about that to Adam, and we get to learn more about how that process is. It would be something for all of us to be able to attend, and it could be during a meeting, but a breakout kind of a situation. So, and plan it that way. And we could, I mean, before we even finalize the goal, we could say that this year, we're going to do this, this, and this, you know, or, you know.
Yeah, it was just an idea to just get more in-depth with certain areas that would help us be able to fulfill this role better.
Mm-hmm. So, on that, I did search onboarding, and from, it's, in the 2020, 2021 thing which was brought forward, it's what, and Jackie brought it forward, but there's something for school committee and superintendent protocol that Stephanie put in, and then the handbook that Emery did, and then, but there's, there's more stuff, so I, I just... but there's, there's more stuff, so I, I just have to go, go through and.
And it's funny too, when I opened that handbook too, I was like, oh, that answers a lot of the questions I had about calendar and, you know. So I might even need updating, to be honest.
I'm sure it probably does. I mean, I think everything needs to be probably, you know, looked at and whatever, but there is, I know that there is, we don't necessarily have to start from scratch. Within this, within the resources that I have, and I might even have paper copies and stuff of my, in my drawer at home of things that I got, um, when I first started. Just that maybe it wasn't scanned in, maybe it was given to me in hard copy, but I'll, I'll go through and look and just see, and see if there's other stuff because I, it doesn't make sense to me, the work has already been done.
Absolutely.
Um, we just need to locate it.
Yeah.
And see, I might actually reach out to Emery and see if he has, um, some of that stuff. Um, or maybe even Deanne, uh, see what we can, see what we can come up with.
Okay. And then the last area that we talked about was even, um, collaborating or even giving feedback on the next, um, cycle of the strategic plan.
Okay. All right, um. Any other questions, comments for those first two subcommittees? Nope. All right, uh, community relations.
All right, so we discussed, um, upcoming community events, so specifically Dyno Fest is coming up, it's September 10th. Um, Stephen shared that he's already secured like a 10 by 10 tent to have, um, hoping to have some of the leadership team, um, perhaps some of us and maybe even students as well, especially from the high school. Um, there, just to be, you know, visible in the community that we're all part of the community, the school as a whole. Um, we were talking about doing like a little, you know, giveaway, little stress balls or coloring sheets. Uh, Stephen reached out about being part of the scavenger hunt as well. So that's in the works. Um, there's going to be a sign-up genius, you said Stephen, so like.
Oh, no, it's just like a Google sheet.
Just like a sheet, oh, cool. But some sort of, you know, just to see who's available and I think many of us might be there anyways, just to pop over and kind of just be a friendly face there. Just to, you know, like I said, be visible. And then with that, also in September, uh, would be parents' night. So perhaps having someone, you know, just at the front, just to greet people, um, we could do a parent that is at the high school, could be at East Meadows and then vice versa for when the high school has theirs, maybe one of us that's over there, that way we're already not splitting up too much of our time trying to get around to everyone, but to be there and just greeting people and visible again, we talked about, um, potentially doing the coffee and conversations again. Um, well, not again, we didn't really do it, but Ally had started facilitating that. Um, but maybe we do something like that, coffee and conversations, start talking budget early or just a time anyone may have a question to be able to have another thing where maybe we're at Dunkin' Donuts in the morning for an hour or so and whoever stops by, stops by and can have a little more, um, conversation with the greater community that isn't at school events. Um, and then we took quite some time talking about the, where the subcommittee is going as far as like what the direction is, are we adding in? We had talked last meeting or the meeting prior about potentially having that capacity conversation part of this subcommittee. What would that look like? We were kind of talking about, is that like the vessel where conversations happen and then get brought back here? What does it look like? Um, what does the committee, that's all of us needs to kind of have that discussion of what we want that process to be?
Am I allowed to say anything?
Of course.
Of course.
I emailed you too, right Jen, when I emailed Stephen saying that I think that our next meeting, I'd like to see it not just be a continuing business, but like actually be on the agenda. I don't know if everyone's going to be here the next meeting. But I feel like we're hitting that point where we really need to have like a serious conversation about it and not just.
And that's sort of how this community relations conversation took is we have to.
Make a decision.
Yeah, we have to make a decision, but we also have to put the parameters around it because part of what happened the last time is that we as the school committee, and it's the collective we, and it's not even necessarily this version of the school committee, got too far, I'll say, in the weeds about what our actual, actual purview is and isn't. Um, so we'll save that, but I, I agree that we'll have that on the agenda for the next time. Um, so the, I think our next meeting is the 30th, is that right?
Yes.
Uh, so our, our meeting on the 30th, um, I would like to see that, um, I don't know that it necessarily has to live in new business, it can be under continuing business, but we'll just, you know, frame it out and that will be a, a healthy discussion about what it is and how it is and.
What our role in it is, to me is like a bigger piece too. Um, being mindful of what, almost say we even have in it as a school committee member, you know, to again, not get too in the weeds in a point, but like we do have a pretty specific duty and some of it, it naturally happens and, um, we just need to be, I think, mindful of our approach and what we're looking for.
I think even the clarification on that, because is it even, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
We'll save that.
Correct.
Right, so I think, I, I'm hoping that our agenda for the 30th, um, is not too heavy because I do believe that this will be an extensive conversation. And I think it's okay if it lives in the continuing business because we haven't wanted to lose sight of it, so we'll have a few things in the, in the new business or whatever, but we'll, we'll make a judgment when, when we put the draft together to see, and maybe we'll table some things for the next time because I do think that this should be, um.
I don't think we've given it the time that it deserves yet.
Absolutely, I hundred percent agree.
Soon rather than later.
Um, so I, I, I think that that, you know, it's going to be, um, it's going to be, it's, it's a big deal, you know, so we'll have to, um, I think there'll be extensive conversation.
And then lastly to start with some good news, we also talked about just continuing the relationship building with the town and sharing when positive things are happening. So even, for example, tonight, you know, we talked about the printers being donated, like do we send out a little, you know, thing to our liaison and maybe FinCom or whoever and say, hey, you know, just like flood them
Yeah.
with some of the good news of grants that we're getting. I know that Adam already sees, sees some people, but to just make sure that we're consistent with that so that we're not only reaching out like in time of need or like when we
I like that.
really have to, especially just to keep, like I said, strengthening that and sharing the good things that are happening, um, in the school.
Right. Yeah. For the maintenance of the fields and all that donation anonymously and all of that, I think that'd be great.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anything else? All right, um, I'm going, do I have to read the visitor's comment since there's no online participation? Do I have, there's no one here for visitors, so I'm just going to say there's no visitor's comment? Is everyone comfortable with that or do I have to still read the blurb? I don't think so.
Comfortable with that?
All right, moving on. Uh, new business, the food service contract.
So this should be in your folders, um, we were approved by Desi, I think Adam sent that to everybody in the past, um, couple of days late last week. But ultimately it's the recommendation, um, to recommend to appoint Chartwells as our food service manager for the 22, 23 year. They were the only vendor, um, to submit and receive the composite rating of highly advantageous.
I can't get back to my.
My drive.
Okay, do we need to, um, vote on it then?
Yes.
Any questions or anything with, um, the, um, on the food contract? No? All right, if not, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the food service contract.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Um, the amendment for the, the school calendar.
So this is just a slight amendment, um, and I think Jackie added a blurb, um, unfortunately late today with some of the rationale and I can certainly, if I can find that.
See the updated calendar P D A, but there's a blurb.
So I can, I think it's just copied and pasted into the sheet there, but Ms. Desjarlet wrote that for the upcoming 22, 23 school year, they would like to change the beginning time of the afternoon preschool session to begin 15 minutes later. This would change the session times from 11:45 to 2:15 to 12 to 2:15, 12 noon to 2:30 P M. Sub, there are several reasons why we think this would be beneficial for our students, family and staff. First of all, students who transition to our afternoon program, from other programs will have an additional window of time to arrive, um, that is in better alignment with the afternoon session. Second, families who have students in the pre-K program and our K to six programs currently have to wait approximately 25 minutes due to different dismissal times. This would reduce that wait time to only 10 minutes, which we anticipate will be adequate to have preschool students dismissed and picked up. Lastly, it will bring the preschool teachers' contract into compliance with the Unit A teacher contract as they will have equal prep time and lunchtime as their K to six colleagues. The current schedule has not allowed for the additional 15 time, 15 minutes required by contract. We will observe this to see how these changes impact our programming and look to make adjustments if, um, as necessary. Um, and then as soon as they have a response from the committee, they would begin informing the school community of any potential change.
Questions?
I asked about that for a couple years.
That makes a lot more sense.
Yeah. Okay, um, I'll take a motion.
Guess I'll make the motion to approve, um, the amended 2022, 2023 school year calendar.
For the preschool time change. Um, second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, next up, substitute rates.
So we did put in a proposal, um, it kind of goes back historically, back to, um, FY, or school year 1920, when the last time we made, um, an increase to this was. We did struggle a little bit to find substitutes last year. Um, we did put surrounding districts. This would put us on the higher end if we did go with these numbers, um, to some of our surrounding communities. But figured we would propose this as a, a, a starting point with the committee. Um, and we did consider the minimum wage rates, although they don't always apply to us, but we did consider them, um, in making this proposal. And then nursing is another one that, um, we contracted hourly, so it's just laid out hourly from 25 to 30.
I don't see, oh, why do I not see the job for this?
I feel really silly asking this, but, um, what is the, I might be looking at the wrong thing, but what is the current rate? I see the, um, data sheet that Ally put together of the comparison, but Gramby is blank.
Yeah, ours is on the main sheet.
I don't see the.
I don't see the, I don't see a main sheet either.
I only have a sheet one.
Right.
You don't have substitute fee increase proposal?
No, I didn't have that in my folder, I had to.
I just searched for it.
I had to search substitute rates, I didn't have anything else.
Yeah, Audrey and I don't have anything at all.
I didn't search though.
Yeah, you searched substitute, yeah, we didn't either, we just searched it.
Oh wait, I wonder if I got.
Ally put it in August 12th.
Two rates.
All right. Sorry about that.
What's?
If you type in
Sorry.
substitute rates on the top, it's like a little green.
You put it in the folder?
I just shared it with you, so it'll come through your email. Or through your shared with me in the drive.
I just want to make sure it gets added into the folder for after. Just so that where it should live.
You're not on it. Jill's not on it, but now if it's in the folder, then she should be, right?
I just found it.
Okay.
Did you get it Jill?
Yeah, I found it.
Do you have the, the fee increase proposal though, in the email?
Oh.
Yeah.
Just now, Stephen just shared it.
Okay.
I don't have that one.
What's that?
I just searched it, actually I saw mine recently.
It's in the e, he just sent it.
He just emailed it, you're on it.
It's not, that's from like 2000, that one I have, is there a separate one?
No, go back to that.
There's a link in it.
Okay, sorry.
So it's really like that second box on that main sheet, that's, that was the proposal in 2019.
There's a link on this one somewhere?
Nope.
I can't find it.
So there's that one and Stephen just emailed us.
Okay. Sorry.
I don't have that one, you have Audrey.
If you click on surrounding districts link, it opens up to that spreadsheet.
Gotcha, thank you.
And I know, actually, from some other superintendents, they raised their sub rates and still struggled to find subs in the last year. So I don't know that this alone will do it. Um, certainly this could be a first read, we can always adjust if we needed to. Um, if you had questions or needed more information or wanted to go with a different rate or consider a different rate, um, we can always make adjustments.
And we're, um, sound budget-wise to do that?
Yes.
I don't, um, have any further questions? Do you need to vote on this or no?
If you're comfortable with it, if there's no questions and you want to move it forward, I'm certainly fine to accept it, but.
I just need one more minute to
Yeah, no, no, take, take your time.
For just a second.
Take your time. It does put us on the higher end for like a retired licensed teacher in comparison to some sort of.
Would their license have to be an active license though? Because at some point, where's the delineation on that?
Yeah. That's why we have had retired, that's why we put retired teacher or licensed. So if it, if you have a license that's active, but you're not retired, you could get that rate, but if you're a retired teacher, you can also get that rate.
So your license does not need to be active?
Right, right, because some teacher, some teachers retire and they don't maintain, it like ends on their retirement date, but we still give them that credit.
Got it. Keep in mind.
Cause most of them are, most of our subs are retired Grammy teachers too, so it's kind of like taking care of your own.
Yeah.
What is the decision? Do we want to take a motion to, uh, vote on this or do you guys need more time to think about it and have this as a first read?
Well, I don't think I want to add it to next meeting's agenda because we've got a lot going on for that one. I feel like obviously Adam looked at this too and felt that it was reasonable within budget. Terry?
Yep, we can do it. I mean, again, like anything in the budget, it takes, we have budgeted a pot for substitute teachers. Sometimes we get there, sometimes we don't, so, but felt like with this, it gave us leeway too. You know, if we were to get hammered any year, depending on the vote, like whether we voted for it or not, we might have to find like other savings in other parts of our budget that we move into the sub line, um, but...
And this still doesn't guarantee bodies to be able to do it.
Right.
Exactly.
So, you know, it might be a, I'm comfortable making a motion to approve the substitute fee increased proposal.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
I just have one quick question actually.
Sure.
The sub paraprofessional versus a sub teacher bachelor's? Now, just knowing sometimes like subs float around. If you're a sub, if you have a degree, would you get the higher number? Like say you're put in a para room, but you have a bachelor's, which would, how do you follow this graph?
It would depend on who they're subbing for.
So it's the title of what you're subbing for?
I thought we made an adjustment for somebody that was doing that, that was...
Because my understanding is sometimes like you would sub, you know, you get the call, you say, I'm going to sub for grade X and you get to school and sometimes you're moved to grade B. If, would that align? I thought that there was a, yeah, I thought there was a distinction with that because essentially you could have the same degree and be doing that.
Well, I guess if they signed up like on ASOP to take a teacher job and they got there and we said you're going to be in for a para, then yes, we should, we would have to, we would give them the teacher rate if we made that change on our own when they arrived, if they thought they were subbing, filling in. Yes, in that case, but if they signed up for, to fill a para position for that day?
I think the only spot that could be sticky is if they sign up for a para and then suddenly they're covering a slot and then acting as a teacher in a certain area.
I know it's not much, I just...
Because that happens.
Right.
So then what would be the scenario then? Right.
Right, I couldn't tell you right now how a real scenario would play out.
The comparisons are just like without and with, and that just seems like an easier thing to follow, then it's, you're not worried about which, do you know what I mean? So just looking at the comparison where it says just without license and with license, it just, it's a smoother read, I suppose.
But it's a mother, not you're subbing for a teacher or a para.
Correct, because I, yes.
Now that you made me look at it more, my only other question is, this was given to us from Ally when she was still interim?
Uh...
No, I don't think so.
Because it still says interim up at the top. That's the only thing, as I looked at it more, looking on.
Yeah, I think in late spring she sent it to me, but we pushed it back in the spring because we wasn't going to have that conversation at that point.
It only caught my eye once I started looking at it more.
So I think she had sent it in maybe April, May, but I had said, we're, there's no sense in putting this on an agenda now, let's wait until...
Yep. I'm still sticking with my initial motion.
Second. Any further comments? Discussion? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
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 Okie dokie. Enrollment dashboard.
There's nothing for the enrollment dashboard tonight. Well, we won't really have anything new until that first September meeting, so people are like in the process of registering now, so they're not all in the system and everything. Meetings are being scheduled as counselors come back next door, so, um, we should see significant movement in the September one.
Um, school capacity, I'm going to recommend, since we've already distinguished, that we want to have lengthy discussion on this on the 30th, that we just table all discussion for that until then, unless something is pressing that we need to know about. Good?
Um, school committee retreat. So we had kind of touched on that as well, um, but do we, what do we want to do? Do we want to make a plan for our meeting af, the first meeting after the 30th to spend some time to flesh out the goals? Or do we want to try to come up with another date here and now to do something like on a Saturday morning or, you know, dinner one night, get a pizza and work on it like something?
For goals?
Yeah, you know, the school committee retreat. So I know the primary focus of the retreat was to work on goals. We had it on the agenda, we kind of touched on it, but I'm not sure if we have 100% of a landing place where we decided and we have it on the agenda, so we can kind of talk about it. So what, and then what we would want to see accomplished at the school committee retreat would also be the other thing to talk about that, so we have an agenda.
Do we want to schedule an after, an evening or whatever? Or do we want to add it to a current meeting scheduled date and make it almost like a subcommittee breakout?
Right, so that's what I'm asking. So do we, what, what are, what are people's thoughts? What do we want to do? So our next meeting is the 30th, that one's going to be pretty full, then the one after that, September 6th, and then September 20th. So our September...
Six is going to be subcommittee breakouts anyway, right?
Right, so we could, instead of having subcommittees, we could have it be school committee retreat, so we would just work together on, on that.
I would prefer that, especially because if we're meeting the 30th and then that's the following week on the 6th, personally, I really don't want to add another meeting.
All right.
We're also meeting the 29th.
And then we're meeting the 20, right, it's, yeah.
We're meeting the what?
The negotiation. We have a hell, hold date for the 29th.
But that hasn't been...
I haven't heard anything back, other than that date sounded good to hold it.
And then we also have the end of September, obviously.
Yep.
So.
So I think September 6th makes sense to do that. It's supposed to be a working group meeting, but this is what will be, the working group will work on.
Could we decide on the 6th if we wanted to move work groups to the following September meeting too?
Absolutely, yeah.
Right, if we felt necessary?
Um, and the other thing is if it's, um, we can always, no, I guess I was going to say we could post it with both having subcommittees also. We know, have the whole meeting be, you know, have a quick business, anything pressing, then go into school committee retreat, work on goals and whatever else we decide to, and then we could have, you know, we only ever do about half hour or so for, um, the subcommittees. So it could be a bit of a marathon, but it's worthwhile if there's things that we think might need to be, um, touched upon. And also if, if it doesn't, doesn't lend itself, we can always push the agenda, we, you know, we can modify.
I'm fine with that.
Mm-hmm. So what do we want to see at our retreat besides goals?
I was going to suggest if people want to send things to Jackie and then we could compile a list for the meeting on the 30th to run through them, so we could keep school committee retreat on the agenda for the 30th and then we could have a list of items that people shared with us.
Great.
If that works.
Of goal ideas?
Of ideas for topics for the, besides goals. I know goals will be.
So you said goals and then strategic, something about the strategic plan, right? So those would be the two things, I think.
And then the three year, three times a year training.
Right, and those are all connected to the goals.
Right.
So if there's other topics that people wanted to discuss on the September 6th...
I'm good now.
Then we can send that to Jackie and we'll talk about it on the 30th and decide what actually ends up on that agenda.
Perfect.
Okay. All right, you're up. Superintendent report.
So, hard to believe, right here on August 16th, but staff is back next week. Looking forward to seeing them. Um, we have new teachers, new staff coming in next Tuesday and Wednesday. We have a couple of days with them, um, to go over things and give them the lay of the land, and then, um, teachers are in for professional development Thursday and Friday. We'll kick it off with, uh, convocation on Thursday, August 25th. We'll begin at 8:00 AM. School committee is certainly welcome, um, if you're available and, um, so yeah, really excited to, we're starting to see people in the building a little bit more and it's always a good time of year and, you know, not everybody might feel that way as they leave the beach, but, um, universal free lunch is back officially. We sent out that letter last week, so we were excited to see that. Uh, we still are encouraging families to fill out the applications that will be, um, sent out for free and reduced price meals. It can, um, provide eligibility for P E B T benefits, waive certain testing fees like AP exams, SATs, so we do encourage that, um, when that information comes out in the next week or two, um, families fill it out, but it is free lunch for all again, um, for the school year. So I know we were hopeful for that and it came, but it came late. Bus routes were posted on the website, so the website is undergoing some changes as we move along. Um, if you go to the website, right on, under the picture, there's a column that gives junior, senior high school and East Metal bus routes. You just click on that and you can find the bus routes, so those are available and will be communicated out as well. Hiring, we are still, at this point typically, I wish I was saying we were done with hiring, um, but just like we talked about substitutes, um, we're, we still have about three or four positions open, um, two resignations as late as last Thursday or Friday, so, um, still some movement there, which is challenging, and I think, um, that hiring process has been time consuming and I appreciate the principals and leadership teams and all the hiring committees, their efforts to, um, get the best possible people into those roles. Um, but yeah, it's, it's challenging out there and I know other superintendents are talking about it as well and, um, you know, we're excited about the hires we've made, but still have a little bit of work to do there. And then, um, I talked about staff returning, students return on Monday, August 29th, except for pre-K and K who come in on Tuesday, September 6th. So looking, looking forward to seeing, um, full buildings and full classrooms over the next couple of weeks.
Excellent, any questions? Okay, uh, no finance in operation, because Adam's on vacation. C E S, you're not meeting until September. Look at that, I remembered. Gold star for me. With, is there anything else? I think we've got our agenda for the 30th pretty well flushed out, um, and then if you have anything, send it to Jackie for our retreat, which will be on the 6th, um, at a regular time. And if there's nothing else, then we'll take the vote to go into executive session. We're going to vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part A 3, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, wow, bargaining. As doing so, an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Can I have a roll call?
Aye.
Ms. Karen?
Aye.
Mr. Paulson?
Aye. Close enough.
Aye.
Ms. Shuda?
Aye.
All right, thanks everybody, have a good night.